Good afternoon. This is the City Council Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs. We call to order. Can the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilor Dion?
Here.
Vice President Ferrer?
Chair Bozak?
Here. Just a quick note, Councilor Vice President Ferrer is running late. She'll be here when she is able to get here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on the agenda this evening is citizens' input. Clerk, do we have any citizens' input? We do not. With that said, we will move to item two, which is the minutes for the July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve is made. I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three is a resolution to convene with a representative of the Board of Park Commissioners, the city administrator, and a representative of the Forest Police Department to discuss concerns regarding unauthorized use of public parks, which was adopted ten eight, two thousand twenty-four. Can I have members from the Park Board, Police Department, and City Administration come forward, please? And when you come down, if you could identify yourself, name and title, would be greatly appreciated.
Sergeant Brandon Wixson, Forest Police Department.
B.J. McDonald, Chairman of the Park Board.
Amber Burns, Vice Chair of the Park Board.
Seth Aiken, City Administrator.
Good afternoon to everyone. Thank you for being here. So just to get the public up to speed here, a resolution was filed by myself regarding concern that we had in one of our city parks. I'll read the resolution for the public. Whereas numerous residents of the city of Forest have expressed concern regarding unauthorized use of city parks for parties, barbecues, and other outdoor events to the Board of Park Commissioners. And whereas those who are using the public parks for large gatherings must obtain authorization from the Board of Park Commissioners in accordance with section fifty-four fifty-five of the city code, which relates to control of recreational facilities, cemeteries, trees, and shrubs on public ways, in accordance to Mass General Law's Part One, Title Seven, Chapter forty-five, Subsection Five, which relates to powers and duties of the Board of Park Commissioners. And whereas individuals who are taking these events are often consuming alcoholic beverages in public parks in violation of section forty-six nine of the code, which relates to consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property, consumption on private property without permission. And whereas public safety in these parks is of utmost concern as these unauthorized events result in unsanitary conditions within these public recreational areas due to littering and improper disposal of garbage in violation of section twenty-six thirty-two of the code, which relates to littering prohibited, therefore be it resolved that Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convene with a representative of the Board of Park Commissioners, the city administrator, and a representative of the Forest Police Department to discuss these concerns regarding unauthorized events being held in public parks that jeopardize public health and environmental cleanliness, and to seek appropriate action to remedy the matter by achieving consistent enforcement of all related city ordinances and Mass General laws. With all that said, how this came to be is a conversation took place at one of the Park Board meetings, which I'll let Chair McDonald explain a little bit more. It then came forward to us through a letter from the city residents concerned about what was going on in the public parks, which then resulted in this meeting. So Chair McDonald, I'll refer to you if you want to give us some background on the situation as we stand.
Sure. So it came, we received a, for lack of a better word, complaint prior to our October meeting. It was the first time we were made aware of the situation, and it was taking place at Pulaski Park. So it was one isolated park, which is a neighborhood park. Parking is difficult down there. And it was in the tennis courts that are not probably in the best shape. So they're not being utilized for tennis right now, and this group of people has kind of taken it upon themselves to use it for volleyball, which is fine. If that's a complaint, then we don't really have, you know, much to refute if you're just playing volleyball down there. But it was not. And the complaint that came forward, they had pictures, they had documentation, they had everything where this particular group of people, they were taking over the neighborhood. The parking was, they were blocking driveways. They were, there was alcohol, there was tents, there was selling. And according to them, it had been happening for a long time, and it had been gone unaddressed. When it came to the Park Board, we worked with the Police Department, notified them of what was going on. The suggestion with the administration was to lock down that tennis court area because there are no tennis nets there, and it's not in great shape. So we secured that place, that area of the park, spoke with the Police Department, let them know that this particular group of people does not have any permits, they do not have any permission from us to have tents, to be doing any of this stuff. And apparently, there have not been any issues at Pulaski Park since then. And that's kind of where we stand as of now. As is the Park Board. Did I miss anything?
No.
To the officer, if you want to add your piece in as far as any calls, responses to the issues that were identified?
Certainly. So over the summer, we received reports from the community groups of very few, far between, sort of isolated incidents. We monitored it. Over the course of the month of October, it quickly grew out of control, some of the same complaints that he was talking about. In response, there's an officer assigned to that neighborhood, the Maplewood area. He went down there. This group is predominantly Spanish-speaking. We had a Spanish-speaking officer as well, came down there, advised them of, we have like a four-page summary internally of all the rules regarding the parks and ricks. Advised them of that. They were very understanding. They've since moved to Kennedy Park, which has proper volleyball facilities. And since then, we have not received any complaints from Pulaski Park. There was one call for some sort of argument when we got there. Officers didn't find anything. So since then, it seems to have been addressed, and we haven't had any further issues.
Okay. So I guess my only question here would be, now that it's moved from Pulaski to Kennedy, are we still having issues regarding selling, alcohol consumption, blocking of driveways, behavior that wouldn't be necessarily allowed in a public park? Are we having any of those issues currently?
We haven't heard.
We haven't gotten any complaints.
My officers did kind of monitor the same issue. It seemed, to be quite honest, that this group was not aware that that was a violation of anything.
Okay.
Since then, we have not received or seen any complaints or any of the same behaviors.
Okay. Excellent. Councilor Dion?
Have either one of you, or any of you, actually, I'm sorry, received any complaints about people sleeping in Kennedy Park? I've had numerous phone calls from neighbors who live in the area.
No.
That they've had people sleeping overnight in the park.
Within the park itself?
Hmm.
I have not.
Okay. So I guess the answer to that is when they see it, call the department?
Absolutely.
And you'll address the situation.
Yeah, that park's well-posted. The people that generally engage in that behavior are well-aware, and we can certainly address that.
And that's typically when we get complaints, too. It's kind of like, you know, we meet once a month. So as things are happening, by the time it comes to us, it's, unless it's an ongoing issue like what's happening at Pulaski, it's, we kind of defer them to the Police Department. And, you know, with this particular case, they were super helpful with opening the lines of communication and just saying like, this is what's going on, this is what's being reported. And they had the photos, we've shared the photos, and, you know, so it's too late by the time it comes to us for us to actively do anything.
Right, right. And I'm sure many times it's been remedied before against you as well. All right, thank you. That's all I have. I yield.
City Administrator, want to add anything to this?
Nothing to add.
Good.
We did a great job.
So I think as of right now, it seems like the problem has been rectified, at least for the time being. I would ask the clerk just to reach out to the city resident from that neighborhood near Pulaski Park, just to check in, and just advise the resident if there's any further issues to let us know. And then we'll work with the team here to continue to monitor. But other than that, I think we've satisfied the resolution as was written.
I guess the only other thing I would add is just that when we give out permits, we always advise that they have them in hand. So if the police are called, you know, and they have things that they're not supposed to have, the permit would outline exactly what they are permitted to have for their particular event. So in the instance, or anybody that's listening that has a complaint, or, you know, when the police are called, the, anybody that's given a permit from the Park Department should have it in hand in the park when they're utilizing city facilities.
Understood. So what I'm, I'm going to ask if we could just table this?
Table. I'll make a motion to table.
Thank you. Motion is made to table. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it very much for your time.
Thank you.
Item number four on today's agenda is a resolution to convene with representatives from the Gates of Hope Incorporated and a representative from the City Administration to discuss options to help Gates of Hope Incorporated continue their work for the citizens of the Flint neighborhood, adopted ten eight, two thousand twenty-four. Can I have a representative from Gates of Hope come down, please? And Attorney Aiken is already here with us. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you can address your name and address for the record, please?
Faith Bon Jovi, one sixty-eight Quikashan Street.
Thank you. So the resolution for this evening was filed by myself, and it reads, whereas the Deval School Building will be transferred back to the city from the Flint Neighborhood Association, whereas within the building, Gates of Hope Incorporated was serving the local neighborhood with a food pantry along with clothing and other needs. And whereas without this service, many in the neighborhood will go without basic needs. And whereas the organization is in need of a location to continue this good work, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convene with a representative from Gates of Hope and a representative from the City Administration to discuss options to help this organization continue its work for the citizens of the Flint neighborhood. So I filed this resolution simply because I've worked in the Flint neighborhood for over eleven years. I was first born in the Flint neighborhood, so I'm very, very well aware of the neighborhood that it is. I'm very well aware of the citizens that need the help that this organization provides. Now, it was clear at the last full City Council meeting that the displacing of Gates of Hope is in result of the issue with the Deval School Building. My concern that I bring forward here today is that you have an organization that is very much needed in this neighborhood. The resources they provide are critical to the people that live in the Flint neighborhood. And now, we have a situation where they have nowhere to go with an unsure timeline of when they have to leave the building. So to the City Administrator, I want to go to you first. I recognize the fact that the building is probably going to be taken back by the city. My question is, what can we do to help this organization continue to do the work they're doing? What options do we have available to us? What can we do?
So important to note that about a year ago, the mayor, Mike Dion, some other folks did meet with Gates of Hope, indicated that it was very likely that they would be ultimately displaced from that building, regardless of whether there was a plan. You know, I'm hearing, and this is the first time I've ever heard of this, was the last meeting, but there's rumor that there was some plan in place for the Flint Neighborhood Association to sell that building. And I'm telling you that if the building does go to the city, the city is going to put an RFP and sell the building. Either way, there was going to be displacement of the organization. And so at that time, there was a meeting with Gates of Hope to indicate that there would be displacement, to understand what the needs were. And to let them know that if they found a location, they should let the city know, and if there was a way that we could help, we would. I believe there might have been one further discussion with Mike Dion. I don't know, but there was never a second contact with Gates of Hope, coming back saying, yeah, we found someplace, or we looked someplace, or we're having trouble with this. And, you know, I don't know, you know, and not to be callous about it, but I, you know, the city wants to help where it can, but I don't know that it's the city's job to, you know, we have a lot of nonprofits in the city to pursue a group and say, you know, we met, we asked how we could help, we haven't heard anything, how can we help, right? That's just not, that's not the job of the city. We're glad to help when somebody approaches us and we try to figure out solutions. But in this case, we were not contacted again, so there has not been any additional efforts made on this. I will say that the efforts that the city is already making, you know, in aggregate around, you know, trying to help groups meet needs and homelessness and opioid crisis, and, you know, all the different things that sort of factor into different needs in the city, is pretty robust. And we're going to talk about that, I think, in the Finance Committee meeting. We have a whole presentation, a whole kind of stack of documents that we'll put together with numbers and things like that. So I don't know that there are more resources existing right now to put toward this, because I would suggest the city's already putting a lot of resources towards trying to meet different needs in the city, and it becomes kind of a triage. You know, I think it's, it would be sort of easy for somebody to say, well, you know, the city administrator said they're not going to help Gates of Hope, so they don't care about food pantries. Well, there are fifteen of those in the city, or I think more, actually. There are soup kitchens, there are resources, there are things that we are investing in and supporting. And, you know, because one is being displaced, that is a very difficult situation, no question about it. But I don't know that we have resources immediately that we could put towards that, because they're already being put toward other efforts.
So, and I'll turn to Ms. Bon Jovi here for a second. Other than that conversation from a year prior, has there been any other conversations with the city in looking for any sort of guidance or assistance to a relocation?
No, there was myself and some other people on our team that did meet with Mike Dion and the mayor and another lawyer. We were told that there was no resources available, no funding available. And he didn't sign up, and he's not a resident, but one of the people who is here tonight that actually did reach out to the mayor's office again and reached out to Mike Dion's office, never had a phone call returned or an email returned. And it wasn't to say that we found anything, because we didn't, but it was just to see if there was any follow-up on the city's end. We never had a phone call returned or anything. I did not make the call, but the gentleman who did is here tonight. We did look a year ago, a year and a half ago, for places, and there's plenty of places if you got the money. You know, if you got thirty-five hundred and up, you know, yeah, you could find a place to rent, you can even find a building to buy. But unfortunately, even though we've, you know, tried to raise money and reach out to different, you know, groups and not necessarily the city for funding, but just, you know, fundraisers on our own and, you know, local churches and individuals, we raised fifteen thousand dollars, but that doesn't go far today. So that's where we're at. We're still looking. We would have left when we heard, you know, a year and a half ago. We didn't want to drag this out. So, I mean, I wish I had a better update, but I don't.
And I guess my question to the City Administrator, if, if the building ends up getting taken over by the city, my conversations with Ms. Bon Jovi is that the timeline of when they have to leave is unclear.
That's true.
So would reasonable people agree that if the city were to take back the building, that a reasonable timeline is given to when she may have to relocate to an alternate place? Or is there a reasonable timeline now?
There's no reasonable timeline now, because the, you know, obviously, the question is, how long does it take to put together an RFP? You know, what's the deadline for receiving responses to the RFP proposals? And then what is the timeline that, you know, a buyer, whatever purpose they're going to use for that building? And there are going to be some criteria in the RFP for affordability components and other things. So it's likely going to be housing. I think there's a need there. And having an affordability component in the housing is, you know, it's a deal breaker. Has to happen. So I would imagine that builder or developer, whoever it is, in their proposal is going to identify a timeline. At that point, we'll have a timeline for the start of work. So by the time you get there, you're already thirty to forty-five days in. By the time we have responses and the RFP is out, maybe even longer. And by the time, you know, somebody starts work, now you're in the winter. So there's a, there's a good chance there's, you know, there's two to three months at least before anything really happens there, and maybe longer. But that's speculation.
Of course. Let me ask a more direct question. If the city were to take over the building, assuming the City Council approves the, what's on the agenda, is that meaning an immediate exit of the organization from the building? Or then, if it's approved, a timeline would be given to them to say, we need you out by this certain date?
Yeah, I mean, like, it would be inappropriate and probably illegal to evict somebody immediately.
Of course.
That's just, it doesn't work that way. So, yeah, we would, we would have a conversation about a timeline and try to make it work for everybody.
Councilor Dion?
All right. So I'd like to point out a few things first, and then I'm going to ask a question. So you're right. We don't know what's going to happen. The vote is going to take place tonight. I have no idea how anybody's voting, what anybody's thoughts are. From my point of view, so I have a copy of the, it's referred to as Notice of Claim and Right of Revertic Clause, which they call it, put a cloud on the sale of the building. I have a copy of that. So this was filed May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Correct.
Well over a year ago.
Yes.
But yet, the city took no action.
That was the action.
Beyond that. There's no, in other words, you didn't come to the City Council and say, we want to take the building back, will you vote to take the property back? That's what I mean by no further action. Yes, you filed this.
Yeah. So we started the legal process. The Flint Neighborhood Association got an attorney, we negotiated with the attorney. And then ultimately, it was voluntarily signed over to the city, at which point we brought it to the City Council for a vote. So there wasn't really anything for the City Council to vote on until we actually had the, the building to be accepted.
Which is now.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
No, there was an insinuation of no action. I just wanted to make sure that that...
No, no. I meant no further action beyond filing this, where we are today.
Okay.
It took this long to get to the table today. Is that fair to say?
That is fair to say.
Okay. So in terms of rumors, it's not rumors. There is a buyer for this building. I have a copy of the purchase and sales agreement here. And I would like to read, if I may, portion of a letter that was sent to me by the purchaser. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but...
A two thousand twenty-three purchaser or a current purchaser?
No, current. This purchase and sales agreement was signed, let's see, this was August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
There is no purchaser for the building. It can't be purchased. It has to be subject to an RFP. I have never seen a purchase and sale agreement for that building, and I'm not aware of any purchaser.
This paper that was filed at the registry blocks the sale.
That's correct.
But there is a purchase and sales agreement.
Signed by someone from the city?
Why would it have to be signed by someone from the city? You hadn't taken possession back yet.
But a purchase and sale agreement, oh, between the Flint Neighborhood Association and somebody else?
Correct.
Oh, so, all right. So what you're saying is that in August of this year...
That the Flint Neighborhood Association has a buyer for the building.
I understand.
Yes.
Okay.
So, and then the first that we heard of this action being taken was after it came to light that there was a purchaser for the building. I'm just putting it chronologically the way I, it came to me and the way I've heard it.
But you'd agree that that action was taken many months before that purchase of...
May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Yep. And that was signed in August of two thousand twenty-four.
Correct.
Okay.
So in this letter, it states, "To date, we have successfully purchased the lodged dilapidated buildings at twelve seventy to twelve eighty-eight and the sixteen sixteen Pleasant Street." Twelve seventy, twelve to twelve eighty-eight Pleasant Street, built in eighteen ninety-one, known historically as the Greenie Building, was purchased on eight twenty-nine twenty-three. The other one purchased on five thirty-one twenty-four. These properties have been vacant hazards to the neighborhood for many years. And in the case of sixteen sixteen, significant back taxes were owed. Those taxes were paid upon sale. Both of these properties now have committed, active, and invested ownership. As the city has been working on a revitalization plan for the Pleasant Street corridor, we did request and receive a meeting with the city this past spring so that our development plans with the properties work in tandem with what the city envisions as the future of the Flint neighborhood. They've completed the architectural, etc., etc. So now I'm going to jump to, which brings us to the Deval School. This past August, Ron and I met with Carlos Caesar of the Flint Neighborhood Association and toured the Deval School. While this building is significant in its own right, being built in eighteen ninety-two and added to the National Register of Historic Places in nineteen eighty-three, the proximity to twelve seventy Pleasant also gives the possibility of additional parking in the event that those future businesses and/or residents need it. While the association was saddened of having to sell the school, their biggest and immediate priority was that the Gates of Hope Food Pantry, which operates out of the building, would be able to continue to serve the Flint community. We did negotiate the sale of the school, purchase and sale dated eight fourteen twenty-four, with the agreement that the food pantry could continue to run out of this location for one year after purchase with no rental fee. To that end, our immediate priority would be to install a new roof on the building so that they have a safe and dry space to operate from. We also did give our word that we would work with them over the course of the year to find them a suitable new home. Our purchase and sale would also honor any current agreements that the association had with neighbors who rent off-street parking on a monthly basis. And upon review of the title for the property, it was discovered that the city did file a notice of claim and right of revert clause with the registered deeds May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. At that time, we did let Mr. Caesar know that there was a cloud on the title. We would not be able to close on the school. Shortly after, I did speak briefly with Mayor Coogan about our intention to purchase the school, and he did confirm that the city was in the process of taking it back. I did let both Mr. Caesar and Mr. Coogan know that if anything were to change, we are absolutely still committed to the purchase. So what arises out of this is, so the city ultimately wants to take the property back, there's going to be an RFP, you're going to sell the building. So we have an individual who is already committed to rehabbing this building. He's taken on a significant challenge doing the two large buildings in the Flint. They're talking market, market, market rate, affordable, businesses on the first floors, everything that would help in the neighborhood. So I guess my one question is, in the event that the City Council voted not to take the property back, this sale ultimately could go through and did go through, that would also give you the financial backing to find a new home and put you on a financial footing moving forward?
That was the understanding I was given, yes.
With that, I yield.
Care to add anything to that?
Unfortunately, we have a purchase and sale agreement and a letter from somebody, I have no idea who that is. I haven't heard anything about that. This is a, unfortunately, all-too-common occurrence down here, which is, you know, a gotcha that I could have been notified of, just to take a look at it and, you know, review it with the mayor. There's an allegation of a conversation with the mayor that I'm not sure ever happened. So I have real concerns about this, so I'm not going to respond to it, because I've never seen it. I don't know that it's a real thing.
Fair.
And I just find it really concerning that we're hearing about it for the very first time, when this has been on the agenda for quite some time.
So let me redirect the question here. As far as a further conversation with Mr. Dion about any help that could happen or could take place, did a conversation take place after a year ago? Has any other further conversations taken place with the organization at all?
I don't know. My sense is that there has not been, but Mr. Dion might be able to tell me different.
Okay.
I mean, I met with Mr. Dion and the mayor this morning, and we talked about this, we talked about the homeless issue, all the different issues that would implicate him. And the extent of his knowledge and involvement in this, from what I understand, is that single meeting after May, when we filed the notice.
Understood. Councilor Dion?
So I don't think I would call this a gotcha moment. First time that in discussion this building came up was at the last City Council meeting, and we sent it to finance. So we were all well-aware that a conversation was going to take place. So am I to understand that you have never, ever heard of Olivera Investment Incorporated?
Nope.
Really?
I've never seen that purchase and sale.
So you don't know that Olivera Investment Incorporated is also buying those two large buildings on Pleasant Street?
They may. I'm not involved in that, but I've never heard their name associated with anything that I've been involved in. And no one, in preparation for this meeting, has told me anything about them.
With that, I yield.
It may very well be something that there are people in the city that know about, but I haven't heard a word. And ordinarily, where this is, you know, this is well-known to be on the agenda for this meeting, I think I would have heard about it, but I clearly did not.
Understood.
Well, I have no reason to doubt, if this individual states that they spoke with the mayor, I have no reason to doubt that they didn't. So maybe you don't know, but the mayor does, then.
Oh, I mean, I've talked to the mayor pretty extensively about this, so...
Do you yield, Councilor?
I yield.
Okay. So, again, I want to reiterate the fact that I understand that the building is kind of in a loop right now. But essentially, again, my concern continues to be a nonprofit that serves the community that will now be displaced and possibly could not be serving that community. So my request at this point is to probably table this for the time being, because depending on what happens next with this Deval School Building could then decide what happens with this resolution going forward. And we can't tell the future, but we'll have to figure that out when we go. But I do want to express to yourself and to the city and to the mayor as well that if there is anything we can do to help support this organization, like we would support any other organization that would need help, if their resources are available, or at least the guidance is available, it would be my request on behalf of those who get served in that neighborhood that we do our best to try to help them out as much as possible. That's my simple request. I think it's a reasonable one as well, so...
Motion to table.
Motion to table has been made. I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you very much to both of you. All right. With that said, item number five is a resolution to convene quarterly to review and discuss water supply and water filtration plant. It was tabled on seven fifteen twenty-four. I will entertain a motion to lift from the table.
Motion to lift from the table.
Motion to lift from the table has been made. I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Can I have representatives from the water department here? If you could, gentlemen, good afternoon, good evening. Please introduce yourselves for the committee.
Thank you very much. Paul Furlan, Administrator, Community Utilities for the City of Fall River.
Excellent.
Jim Terrio, President, Wautapa Water Board.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Terrio, for being here, Mr. Furlan as well, as always. So, um, last time we discussed, at the last, um, subcommittee meeting, we just had a brief discussion on where we stood with, um, the water supply. We had Mr. Jacob, Mr. Pella come down as well, um, which, they provided some excellent presentations, and I kudos to, to you, Mr. Furlan, for bringing them down. Um, very well educated in what's going on with the water treatment. Um, so, I'll open the floor to you if you have any updates, um, regarding where we stand, for example, with lead, lead service removal, um, situation with the water department, anything that should be brought to light. Because again, this resolution is meant to quarterly update, uh, the residents on our water situation. So, Mr. Furlan, to you, please.
Yeah, no, definitely. Thank you very much, uh, for having us here tonight. Um, so since you brought it up as, uh, one of the things, uh, that you summarized on, again, David Peller, the Director of, uh, Treatment and Resources, was here at the last meeting, and Brian Jacob, they did an excellent job in front of this committee. They do an excellent job for the, uh, department every day as to, uh, most of our, uh, all of our staff throughout the whole entire division, so. Uh, big thanks goes out to, uh, all those staff members that, uh, that are out there every day to provide everybody's clean, safe drinking water. Uh, just a brief update on, uh, lead service programs. So lead service program, uh, lead service replacement program is still ongoing. Uh, as of our last quarterly report that we provided to DEP, uh, we were at eight hundred and eighty-nine lead services removed so far to date, uh, over the two years that we've, uh, been fully replacing lead services, uh, from the main all the way into the meter inside the house, uh, at no cost to the homeowner. Uh, we've inspected over six thousand properties, uh, to identify their service material type. Uh, one of the, uh, one of the big milestones that we just hit as of October fifteenth was, uh, the implementation of the revised lead in copper rule, uh, which was, uh, propagated by EPA, adopted by DEP, and went into effect. Uh, two days before that, the revised lead in copper rule improved was propagated by EPA, uh, which, uh, took out some of the requirements of the revised lead in cop, the first revised lead in copper rule. Um, and it has a two-year procreation until it takes effect in, uh, twenty twenty-six. So, uh, some of those will stay in place, but some of the milestones that we need to, needed to reach was, uh, full service inventory submitted to, uh, DEP. So all of our service lines, uh, throughout the whole entire city, uh, whether it's, uh, it's a known material or an unknown material, we provided all of that, uh, to, uh, DEP. Uh, lead service replacement plan, which is something that we've been working on and already had in place for, uh, a number of years already, so that was, uh, that was an easy one to provide them. So those are the things that we needed to provide to them, uh, for that deadline. Uh, coming up by Nov- November fifteenth, we're going to be sending out mailers to all of the residents that are either, uh, possible lead service, identified through our records as lead service that we haven't been able to contact yet, or unknown services that are possibly lead. We will be, uh, providing all of those, which is a total of about seven thousand, uh, service customers, uh, with a notification notifying them, uh, that, uh, they either have an unknown service that's possibly lead or they have a service that by our records is identified as lead. Um, there'll be information in there for them to, uh, uh, look up safety precautions that they can take. Uh, also, uh, um, there'll be a link for self-identification for the customer to do it themselves. Plus then also, as always, they can call the water department to be able to, uh, have us come out or one of our contractors inspect their service material, uh, to find out whether it's lead or whether we need to potentially, uh, test pit to see what the material is under the ground, so. A little bit of a long-winded there, but that's, uh, lead service where we are. Um, you know, uh, a lot of other things going on in the, in the department, as always, uh, on a regular day-to-day. Uh, but that's one of the big things that we, uh, that we currently still have going on. Uh, one of the things, and, uh, the President, uh, of the Wautapa Water Board is here, uh, Mr. Terrio, and, uh, you know, he has an extensive background with, uh, with the water department and, uh, with our, uh, reservation area, uh, forty-five hundred acres on the other side of the North Wautapa Pond, as well as our protected area, uh, that's on this, uh, this side of the North Wautapa Pond. Uh, so over the past year, uh, Mr. Terrio, as well as our forest, uh, have noticed, uh, some change in that forest cover that hasn't only happened in our area, but throughout the whole entire region. And if you want, I can let Mr. Terrio speak a little bit about that.
Um, approximately twenty percent of our forest in the reservation, as Mr. Furlan says, approximately forty-five hundred acres and in Dumbio Reserve. Twenty percent of that upland wood is American beech. The American beech is under assault from a leaf blight as well as a bark fungi blight. The estimates from National Forests, Commonwealth of Mass, our own expert, Michael Labossia, is we're going to lose twenty percent of our upland wood. Um, many of the states throughout the Appalachian chain, um, they're making estimates that are pretty scary. Vermont, for instance, is talking somewhere in the vicinity of losing thirty percent of their hardwood. Um, this is very similar. Uh, Council Dion may remember, uh, the Dutch elm. Um, this city as well as many other cities had, well, I, I, I mean, but, um, elms, um, in the late fifties and sixties, we began to lose all of the elms. They, by the mid-sixties, they were gone. Same thing's going to happen with the beech. To that, we are looking at which way to go. Obviously, we want to see something replace them. Right now, black birch is, um, a real good choice. It's, it's a tree that goes right through the canopy. It likes the sunlight. Um, we're looking at several different things. One of them is the American chestnut. Uh, Mr. Labossia was able to attend the quarterly meeting of the American Chestnut Tree Group. Um, and he and some others are, um, exchanging chestnut seed. As you're probably aware, chestnut trees once were very common. It was the hardwood of choice throughout the Appalachian chain as well as e- east of the Appalachian chain. Um, they were mostly decimated by the nineteen-twenty. They were gone. Um, there is a new blight-resistant tree, um, and blight-resistant chestnut that we're looking at. And perhaps we're, this is just being fleshed out, brainstormed, if you will. We're looking at the potential of planting our own seedlings, getting chestnut spore and seedlings, and, um, doing something along those lines. If I were to take you on a ride through the fire lanes, um, you'd come along and see a very healthy landscape, beautiful landscape. And then all of a sudden, there'd be nothing, and that's what's happening to the beech. If you drive around the city and you see the ornamental beech, the red, you'll notice the leaves are cupping. We're going to lose all of them. How long? No more than ten years. It'll all be gone. So, um, from my end of it, out there in the woods a lot, that's one of the things that, um, we're working on right now. And with the purchase of the Adirondack Farm, and again, we're just fleshing this idea out. It might be a, a wonderful opportunity to do some forest regeneration, especially of chestnuts, involve school kids. It, it, we're just tossing some ideas around. That's a great opportunity to use that facility. If we plant chestnut now, it'd be thirty-five years before we'd have mature upwood, um, upland wood. But it, it's well worth investigating. Um, right after World War Two, the Water Board planted white pine. They planted almost fifteen thousand white pine out there, and that's why you see that. Prior to that, it was the oak. Um, we lost the red oak to hardwood rot. White oaks are quite strong, very, very strong acorn crop this year, so our deer and our turkeys are very happy. But, um, I did want to, um, I asked Mr. Furlan, um, I said, "I'd really like to bring up the, uh, the beech" because it's, it's sad to see it going, um, and, uh, you know, over the last, well, in my forty-five years, I, I've seen it, you know, dense forest, and now it's, there're trees, twenty-four, thirty-six inch diameter trees are coming down. They're just falling right over. It's a sad event. However, um, you know, we'll do due diligence. Um, the black birch is very strong. They're coming back. Uh, and we'll do some, um, innovative replanting. It'd be, um, a very interesting legacy for us to leave the future. Um, so, that's the story on, on that. Um, what are we, about three inches below full pond? We're in a semi-drought. I was over at Copacoot the other day. It's in beautiful condition. Um, you've done a, a tremendous job over there. Uh, North Pond is full. That's an excellent point to be entering the fall. Uh, your environment is in good shape.
It's good. Yeah, and to Mr. Furlan, you know, him and I took a tour around the, the water, um, facility on Bedford Street. We went all the way deep in the woods as well and got that inner, that, uh, experience. He also made me do a lot of exercise going all the way up the tower. That was a good time. Um, yeah, that, my legs hurt for three days. Um, but the reality is, and I agree what you're saying, and this subcommittee will be supportive of that. It's kind of in our purview of environmental affairs, so, uh, as that conversation evolves, let us know if there's anything we can do to support, advocate, anything.
We would very much like that, and if any of the members of the council would ever like to take a tour of that area, um, it's, it's referred to as the Bridle Path. It come, goes from Interlock into Williston Road. Um, it's a little bumpy, but it, you can get a really good idea of the health of your watershed.
As long as Mr. Furlan drives, that's fine. Perfect for me.
Excellent. So, one thing I just want to make clear so people don't go, the blight does not affect the drinking water. There is no effect to the drinking water.
No, it does not. No, I'm sorry if, uh.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, it wasn't implied, but somebody could imply that, so I just wanted to make sure that's clear. You know, and this just goes to show one of the many things that we do. Everybody thinks that, you know, uh, they turn on their faucet, the water comes out. But this is one of the many things that the water department, sewer department, community utilities that we have to do and deal with on a daily basis to be able to continue to provide, uh, clean, safe drinking water to everybody. So just, uh, um, one other thing that I wanted to mention, I want to provide these to the council is, uh, this weekend on Saturday, we're doing a, if you want to give them to all the councils later on as well, uh, we're doing a, uh, tour out on Interloggin. We're opening up the Interloggin area, uh, so where the old Ice House is, uh, as well as all the way up to the, uh, Colonel Jefferson Borden, ma- uh, excuse me, Colonel Spencer Borden, uh, mansion out at the end of Interloggin. Um, the entrance will be off of, uh, Meridian Street, right across from Hannah Street, uh, into the back gate of the, uh, water department property over in that area. Uh, we'll have parking there, and then, uh, overall parking will be on Meridian Street and Old Meridian Street. So, um, if anybody wants to come out, it'll be ten to one. Uh, they'll be able to walk all the way in. Uh, we'll have a couple of different, uh, historians with, uh, displays set up to talk about the Ice House, to talk about the mansion and things like that, uh, for the public to do. The foliage out there is perfect at this time, so.
Beautiful, right?
Excellent. Council Dion, do you have anything?
I'm set.
Okay. I just have a few follow-up questions for you, Mr. Furlan, again, more or less to the last, um, quarterly update we had with the water department. At the last meeting, the discussion took place regarding the building at the watering department, which is, was for storage of, I believe, it was a side building off the side. It was concerns about the roof and the overall quality of that building. Do we have any update on the plans for that at all?
Yeah, so that's the old garage, uh, which is over next to the eighteen seventy-five tower. Uh, so we do have a CPC, uh, application submitted for, uh, work on that building. I believe we submitted for about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to redo the roof. Uh, we're going to work with Diamond to do soffits, doors, uh, windows, and things like that to, uh, to have the vocational school restore all that. Uh, that did make it through the eligibility round within CPC, and we are preparing the final application to submit.
Excellent. Uh, second was the conversation about a new roof at the water treatment plant.
Yes.
And you and I had discussed this as well, so where does that stand?
Yeah, so, uh, again, that is something that is on our list to do. Uh, the expectations with the cost on that roof is that we'll be coming, uh, to the administration of the council for a, uh, for an authorization for a loan for that, so I expect that within, uh, probably within the next couple of months.
Okay. Um, last time we spoke regarding open positions, you stated there were about six. Where do we stand with that currently?
Yeah, so, uh, currently we've, uh, reduced now to, uh, five overall throughout, uh, all, uh, divisions, uh, except community utilities. We still have, uh, one open project manager's position as well, so. Um, within the water department, though, we have one open position, uh, at treatment, uh, watchman attendance position, second shift, which will be just getting out to advertise, first shift left, second shift, uh, staff member transferred to first shift. It will be advertising the second shift coming up, and we do still have a couple of open positions within the, uh, water maintenance division.
Okay. And then lastly, um, you mentioned the last meeting, the goal, uh, for lead service inspections is ten thousand inspections. Um, now, I wasn't sure if that was in the fiscal year or in the fiscal year in December. Um, you mentioned you're about six thousand in, so is there anything that is presenting a challenge for you to get to that goal that you're anticipating to hit?
So, the requirement for lead service replacement is one thousand by the end of the calendar year. Uh, at our quarterly report that was due, um, that we, uh, submitted starting, uh, October, um, up to the beginning of October, we're at eight hundred and eighty-nine. We're currently on track to be able to meet that thousand by the end of the calendar year, uh, per the requirement of our ACO. Um, the inspections, again, uh, we've done, uh, over six thousand of them. We probably have seven thousand, uh, unknowns left to be able to inspect. Um, but the, uh, those inspections are, um, returning probably about a ten percent, uh, ten percent of the services are actually lead. Um, so the concern that we have right now is, uh, for next calendar year, being able to find enough lead services to, uh, meet the required replacements. But, uh, we are going to push on. Uh, we currently have a contractor that's doing inspections. We expect to be able to put out another inspection-only contract here in the near future to get a group of, uh, lead services to do another lead service replacement contract. So, again, one thing that hinders us with being able to do that, uh, is people not returning our calls. Again, we have, uh, staff that are calling after hours. Uh, we go to public events. We went to the feast, uh, the, uh, feast in Kennedy Park, the Feast of the Holy Ghost. We had a table set up there with our staff, uh, to talk to people, to try to, uh, get information or schedule appointments to come out to inspect their homes. Uh, at this event that we're holding this weekend, we'll have a table set up, uh, for any residents to come over, find out if we know the material of, of their service. If not, they'll be able to, uh, they'll be able to schedule an appointment. Um, you know, we, we just, uh, we just finalized an agreement with, uh, EPA through their GLO initiative, Get the Lead Out, uh, which is a, uh, a grant. It's a technical assistance grant, they call it, so they don't provide us money. They provide us, uh, a contractor to be able to assist us, uh, with door knocking and education of the public and things like that. So that will be rolling out within the next couple of months as well.
Excellent. Council Dion, anything else? All right. I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to table this.
I know it's rare, but. Yeah, I would make a motion to table.
Motion made to table, seconded by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
You too. So item number six is a resolution to discuss strategies to discrete, decrease solid waste and recycling costs. However, we were notified after the agenda was produced that, um, the invitees were not, would be not. However, we were notified after the agenda was produced that, um, the invitees were not, would not be able to attend tonight's meeting. So at this time, I'm just going to re- remain, leave that tabled, and we will discuss it at a future meeting. So at this point, we have nothing else on our agenda. Motion to adjourn is made. I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs is now adjourned.